Next year, oh, that's more. It's next year. We can't make five. So, I mean, that's, that's also been filed to put in, put in limits.
Hey. Hey, Daniel. Will you let us know when we're going live?
I did pass that message for those.
Okay. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we are live. I'm going to call this meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. If you would stand to recite the pledge with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Zaring is excused. Mayor Bowman.
Present, thank you. We do have a quorum. We don't have any ceremonial matters this evening, so we'll move on to public participation. Mr. Ratliff, did we have any agenda request forms submitted?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to the approval of the minutes, and I'd like to ask you at this point to please silence your cell phones if you haven't already done so. All right, the first thing is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen from November fifteenth. Those were printed and in your packet. I hope you've had an opportunity to look at those, and I would entertain a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Reese with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. The minutes of the work session November fifteenth were also available to you in your packet. I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Franklin with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. Moving on to the agenda items, the first item is Council Bill eighty-eight.
Council Bill eighty-eight is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville authorizing the city administrator to conduct an annual destruction of records in accordance with the state of Missouri records retention schedules.
Good evening, Daniel.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Before you tonight is our annual records destruction request. In the packet, you will have also received a description of everything that we are asking for your approval to go through and dispose of. This is all in, with the state retention schedules, all in accordance and compliance with those. All of those have timed out and now need to be destroyed. I went through and handed out an additional sheet that I forgot to include in the packet. You'll notice that my wonderful oversight was my own department, so enjoy that. So, that's really it. We've already set up for the company to come down, and if given your approval, we'll dispose of these on December fourteenth. That's not tomorrow, but a week from tomorrow. So, any questions?
For the record, would you state the additional piece that you handed out that wasn't in the packet?
Yeah, those are the records asked to be disposed of by the municipal court department.
Thank you. Any questions for Daniel about record destruction? I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to move forward on Bill eighty-eight.
I have a first motion from Alderman Mills with a second from Alderman Davidson. A roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill eighty-eight is approved and becomes Resolution R zero four four. Council Bill eighty-nine.
Council Bill eighty-nine is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen. City of Harrisville approving a legislative agenda for the year 2022.
I want to speak to that. You had the legislative agenda in your packets, but we have found out since that legislative agenda went out, we found out the list of the prefiled bills of the senators and representatives in Jefferson City, and there are several hundred of those prefiled bills. I want to, I want to recommend that the board table publishing our legislative agenda, we'd like to review and see which bills have been filed now, prefiled, so we can determine which ones we want to support and which ones we want to oppose. I will tell you that there is one bill that has been filed down there that would, would affect us, that I feel we need to come out very strongly in opposition to. There's a move in Jefferson City to make, to do away with all elections and put everything on the November ballot, to totally eliminate municipal elections and put everything on the November ballot. That would create a lot of issues for government elections that occur in the spring, school board elections that occur in the spring, let alone it would add additional cost to the elections, and I think it would create voter fatigue because the ballot in November would be so long. The other part of that is there is also a move to make municipal government partisan, where people have to declare their political party, and I think that one of the reasons why municipal government works so well is because we are nonpartisan. So, I, I'm really concerned about that piece of legislation and other things that I've noticed just in my first, you know, cursory view of the list. So, my recommendation to the board is that we table this until we have the opportunity to look at it a little bit further. And I entertain a motion.
I make a motion to table.
I second.
The motion is from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Franklin to table the discussion of Council Bill eighty-nine upon further review. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring is excused.
Thank you. Council Bill eighty-nine will be tabled until a future meeting. Council Bill ninety.
Council Bill ninety is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville to authorize the Harrisville Emergency Services Department to write off a series of designated uncollectible debts.
Good evening, Jeremy.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Before you tonight is a, another piece of housekeeping, which is to write off the bad debt for the emergency services department. I'd entertain any questions.
Does the board have any questions of Jeremy about any of that? Alderman Reese.
I do just a little bit. This is like, like if somebody rides in the ambulance and then they're billed for it and they don't pay it, and then we're, and so these are the ones we're writing off, that kind of thing. Yes, ma'am. Those are usually sent to a collection agency after a period of time, and then, once then they become uncollectible, the patient becomes deceased or for whatever other reason is deemed uncollectible, that's when they're written off. Well, that was going to be my question. I personally had a ride in that ambulance. I don't know. I can't remember when it was. It's been several months ago, and I never, ever received a bill for that. And it makes me wonder, I'm sure that eventually they will send me one, but I haven't gotten any information at all, and I'm wondering how much effort we put into trying to collect those bills. An extraordinary amount. Okay. I will tell you the reason that you most likely would not have seen that to this point is waiting on insurance. Insurance is the biggest barrier to payment that we come up against. I, I would venture to say that that is, you know, obviously you opened the door, so we're not in violation of HIPAA, I'd like to point that out. And so, we can certainly reach out to them and ask what the status of your account is, and they very easily can tell us exactly where that's at. I keep thinking I'll go down there, but I never do. Okay, thank you. I, I just wondered how, how much effort is put into collecting those bills? We generally, when we've looked at this, I know that Chief Myler has looked at this and other chiefs in the past, there's always been the conversation about outsourcing bill payment. Every single time we have come in, usually above the rates at which for collectibility because we are, we are invested in collecting these debts and trying to make right on these accounts, whereas another company probably wouldn't take that second, second look. So, I mean, it's all about having the right staff in the right place.
Thank you. Alderman Dorhoff.
Do we get reimbursed for any of the COVID-related transports at the EMS?
There was a certain amount of COVID, there was some funding out of Medicare, it depended on how you used it for specific funding. It wasn't particularly a large amount of funding for that particular purpose. We were on the original CARES Act allowed to reimburse for additional hours for emergency services and...
Like overtime kind of stuff?
Yeah, that kind of stuff that was specifically related to COVID, and, and that certainly passed and went long, long ago at this point.
Alderman Franklin.
How far back does this debt go? Is this just in this past year, or does it go beyond?
No, it, this debt could, I, I just noticed as I was kind of looking through the numbers, because we can only provide account number and dollar figure, and so if you look at that, I, I just noticed that the very first one, even down to the fourth one in the line, the call numbers, go really far back because they're sequential. And so, at a certain point, this person left us with a debt that went to the collection, they chose not to do it, and at this point, they've been determined to be deceased, and so we're, you know, that's not a collectible debt at this point. So, that's why we're asking for that to be written off.
Alderman Davidson.
Just question as far as estates go, do we, do we attempt to go after estates, or do we stop when they're deceased? I'm just curious.
No, we occasionally do go to probate on some of these things with mixed success. Usually those debts, we, we're considered last in line in a lot of cases.
Well, the small amounts I can understand, but if there's a large amount, which not many are much over a thousand, but smaller ones I could, I could understand not going.
Yeah, we, we, there's definitely an attempt to, to get as much as we can for, to recover for that fund. However, it's, I mean, it's a tough, it's a tough thing to, yeah, no matter what happens, it's, it's a tough job.
I know, this is like fifty, fifty-three thousand. What's traditionally each year, I can't remember what last year was, and an average of what it was?
It just depends, because there was a number of years where it didn't occur, and so there was a big one last year. We had a, an exceptionally big one last year, so I don't know that we can really go on a necessary an average, and it all, it's very dependent. It, it depends on, you know, how well insurances pay, and as insurances change hands, they outsource their stuff, it, it just becomes a very challenging thing to get. You, you all think, you know, hey, no, I have insurance and they should pay. They make it very difficult because they, the more money they keep, the more money they make, and so they make it very difficult to try to even submit valid claims.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Milner. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring is excused.
Thank you. Council Bill ninety is approved and becomes Resolution R zero forty-five. Council Bill ninety-one.
Council Bill ninety-one is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville amending the operating budget for the City of Harrisville, Missouri for the fiscal year January first, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, and establishing an effective date. First year of Council Bill zero nine one.
Well, good evening, Ben. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. It's been before Thanksgiving since I saw you guys last.
Yes.
So, what you've got in front of you is just the amendment we typically take through. We do two amendments a year, the mid-year amendment, and then one at the end of the year. There's two items on this amendment. One is to carry over funding from twenty twenty, to be, to, that was spent in twenty twenty-one from street repair. The second amendment was to debt service, to incorporate into expenses the parks and rec note that we issued. Those are the two, only two amendments we've got for this one. I believe it requires a first and a second. So, any questions, I'd be happy to ask.
Any questions of Ben? This is end of the year budget amendments for twenty twenty-one. Seeing no questions, this is an ordinance?
I make motion, we should suspend the rules and move Council Bill ninety-one to its second reading.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Milner to suspend the rule on Council Bill ninety-one and advance it to its second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring is absent, or is excused, pardon me.
Thank you. Second reading.
Council Bill zero nine one is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville amending the operating budget for the City of Harrisville, Missouri for the fiscal year January one, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, and establishing effective date. Second of Council Bill zero nine one.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring is excused.
Thank you. Council Bill ninety-one is approved and becomes ordinance number thirty-five seventy-one. Council Bill eighty-seven.
Council Bill zero eight seven is an ordinance of the Harrisville Board of Aldermen adopting the operating budget for the City of Harrisville, Missouri for the fiscal year January one, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. First year of Council Bill zero eight seven.
Ben?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the first reading was November fifteenth. We haven't received any emails or calls, staff hadn't received any emails or calls since then, but I do want to kind of go through a little bit of this. The total budget's fifty-three million dollars and incorporates two million dollars in ARPA funds, which, you know, currently there's a bill in front of the House, I think it's the Senate, that's a flexibility act that actually opens up the regulations on, on the two million to be spent on pretty much anything. It takes the handcuffs off, if you will, of the money that, that the federal government has given cities and counties and states, but we're watching that, and when it comes through, I'll be back before you. It's got the continuation of some very large projects, both park water and stormwater projects, overhead line conversion on the electric side is still there. It's probably one of the biggest CIPs I've seen in review, and a lot of the CIPs you guys do. One of the, in my mind, one of the more important factors in this budget, it's your first ever distinguished budget award, and that's not something to be taken lightly. There's a, a lot of governments go through a lot of work to get that award from the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association. Your budget is stacked up against thousands of cities, counties, and public jurisdictions throughout the United States. Issuing bonds like I do, what they, what bond rating agencies do is they'll look for your budget. When they see that, that award in that, right behind that front page, it instantly gives them an idea of what you guys, what your, what your culture's like. You want inclusion for your stakeholders, your public, and that's one of the things that they do the most, is how much, how much can, can you put out to the public so they understand what's going on? And what this does is show transparency, readability, and scope in your budget. We put a lot of budgets together. Some of them are mere spreadsheets. In Kansas, there's a couple that, that only do this, the bare minimum, just because they just don't want to spend a whole lot of time on it. Harrisonville's a, a growing, vibrant city, and that's what this budget shows. Next year's going to be a little more difficult, they're going to be asked, they are asking for performance measures, so the department heads are all on notice. And when I call, when I say performance measures, they're metrics, they want numbers. We're going to start with what the department's already tracked and, and put that in the budget. So, that's the next iteration of this budget and what the public will see coming down the line. And what we'll do is track that on a regular basis so we can see what they see every day out there when, when they provide their services.
Excellent, excellent. Well, I think you and staff, Kim and Jeremy and Brad and all the department heads can certainly be commended for the work and the effort that you put into the preparation of this budget, so. Good, good work. So, this is the second reading of this budget. Any questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to call.
Okay, Alderman.
On that note, Mayor, I just want to thank personally all the department heads because you guys, it takes a lot of your time, a lot of your effort. It takes a lot of your will to give things up when we have to look in there and find things to take out to cover something else, and I know that's, that's tough for you to do, but I think this board, I think I can speak for everybody up here, we appreciate the camaraderie and the teamwork that you all put into this to make this city work the way it does. So, applause to you all.
Absolutely. Any other comments, questions?
Just need a roll call.
Just a roll call.
Yep, second reading.
We've already read it, so roll call, please.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring is excused.
Thank you. Council Bill eighty-seven is approved and becomes ordinance thirty-five seventy-two. Alderman in committee reports. Alderman Dorhoff, may I start with you?
Sure. I don't have anything to say. It's quick and easy.
Thank you. Alderman Reese.
Um, no, I'll pass. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Franklin.
Yes.
She's got a lot to talk about.
I don't know if, if all of you were able to get up to the Christmas on the Square over the weekend, but Saturday, this place was hopping. I mean, there were people everywhere. Just ask Bill Mills, he'll tell you. He's up there and ran the train for everybody. We had a live negativity, we had a petting zoo, all the stores were open, they were packed. Birdies, Artisan's Corner, Brick House stayed open all day, JT's was hopping, eighteen eighty-six. Everybody was just thrilled to death. The Chamber did a great chili supper, sold out. It was a lot of fun, and I think everybody had a good time. The weather was cooperative, and it was, it got cooler as the, later on in the evening, but by that time, a lot of everything had gone, so it was a great time. I think it really showed what, you know, all of the camaraderie between everybody, the businesses, trying to make everything work. Love the Harrisonville Square. Amanda Steitz did a wonderful job in what, putting this together and getting volunteers to help us all out, so I, I thought it was great. Couldn't say enough about it, so. And one other thing I wanted to say too is I wanted to thank Bright Futures. I have been involved with adopting a family, and I adopt a student every month throughout the year, and you know, whenever you buy clothing and, and they have a wish list and you buy, you always wonder in the back of your mind if it's, if it fits, if the, if the style you're buying is what they like, if, is what they need. And Robin Garrett and Shannon Heiser sat there and came up with the idea of sending a questionnaire to the families to ask them, you know, if this was appropriate, if it's, if it's what their student needs, so forth and so on. And I asked Robin some questions regarding the student I have, and she got right back with me and answered my questions. I thought that was really nice. I know that this time of year that everyone is really busy, but it was really nice of her to do that, so I really appreciated the answer and the response, and it was certainly helpful information, so kudos to them for coming up with that idea. I thought it was great.
Good, thank you. Alderman Milner.
On that note, it, it is, it's a much better process than it used to be. We used to just put out a wish list, and before we came up with the, we kind of went with the philosophy of what you want, or what you, something to wear, something to read, something you need, and something, I forget, there's a little, I can't say it as good as it is, but, you know, it used to be the Xboxes that they wanted, and now they get to ask for the real things that they need. So, it has been streamlined a lot, and it does do good, and the blessing to having Robin is she knows some of these families. So, that is a true gift to be able to help the givers know specific things about without giving away identities, so.
It, it was nice.
Yeah, it is. It, it's, it's a great, it's a great thing. I just wanted to thank all of you all for your kindness, passing of my mom. We appreciate it.
Alderman Turner.
I guess enjoyed the Christmas on the Square, that had a massive turnout, I mean, a lot of people. Well, it wasn't too bad, it's been worse, but, but I mean, there's, I mean, there was so many people, and the stores were open, and I think getting this square revitalized and more stores in is drawing more people out, is really helping Harrisville as a whole. And I love the Square, Grish, doing a fantastic job promoting everything and the events, something's really starting to come back now.
Thank you. Alderman Mills, AKA the train conductor.
I think they covered the square, your, your, your treat came off on time.
Yes, yes.
The only other thing, I'm sure Carl's noticed, on that MODOT project on Mechanic Street, there's a silk fence sock plugged in every one of the storm drains still, so we'll yell at them to take them out, or before we have a rain, we will have a problem with all the water not going in any of the storm drains. That's it.
Thanks for catching that. Alderman David.
I noticed your list wasn't very long. Kudos, I'd like to second what Sandy said about Bright Futures, I've been involved in, my wife was much more involved than I was. It's a great organization to be involved with, and a lot of benefit comes out of that, so thanks for mentioning that. Also want to remind everybody that if the, the Shop of the Cop will be coming up a couple of weeks, the eighteenth, and so if you have the desire to, to gift any money, that helps.
Maybe right around the two-hundred mark, and that's a lot of people running a lot of kids through Walmart the weekend before Christmas, so I think that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Steve.
So, he's increased the number of children that will be helped this year to over two-hundred, so, yeah, that's a lot of kiddos. All right, city administrator report. Mr. Ratliff. Happy birthday, by the way. Yesterday was your birthday.
Thank you for pointing out I'm older. I wanted to make comment on the GFOA award, especially that there was a additional recognition within that award for the finance department. They, they don't always give different awards within that GFOA, and the submittals that we make on what they do, they determine those awards, and so I want to give kudos to the finance department. A lot of the changes that you all have requested that I have implemented, the finance department is usually the blunt of a lot of the, the changes that are made, everywhere from personnel to the different ways that we're tracking the dollars, to even dealing with the grant monies and the department heads and their submissions are all flowing through that department. And so, I want to give kudos to them in that award, and then, of course, the rest of the department heads that were contributories on this budget. I know there's a lot of changes that I've enacted and, and moved forward. When we were discussing goals for next year, Jeremy asked me if he could just recover from me, and that'd just be his only goal for next year. But the, there's a, a lot of great teamwork that's going on and a lot of great opportunities, and you as a board have really, I can't tell you how often in our meetings the staff appreciate the Mayor and the Board of Aldermen being supportive of staff and also the operations of the city, and being mindful of a lot of the things that we want to get done to better the community. The, I, I wanted to make comment on the GFOA award, especially that there was a additional recognition within that award for the finance department. They, they don't always give different awards within that GFOA, and the submittals that we make on what they do, they determine those awards. And so I want to give kudos to the finance department. A lot of the changes that you all have requested that I have implemented, the finance department is usually the blunt of a lot of the, the changes that are made, everywhere from personnel to the different ways that we're tracking the dollars, to even dealing with the grant monies, and the department heads and their submissions are all flowing through that department. And so I want to give kudos to them in that award, and then, of course, the rest of the department heads that were contributories on this budget. I know there's a lot of changes that I've enacted and, and moved forward. When we were discussing goals for next year, Jeremy asked me if he could just recover from me, and that'd just be his only goal for next year. But the, there's a lot of great teamwork that's going on and a lot of great opportunities. And you as a board, if really, I can't tell you how often in our meetings the staff appreciate the mayor and the Board of Aldermen being supportive of staff and also the operations of the city and being mindful of a lot of the things that we want to get done to better the community. So we appreciate you all as well, and you're a big part of this award, of the GFOA award as well. We have the, and now they're going through, the contractor now looking at them based on the documentation to make sure that if there's anything that needs to be corrected, that'll be done.
Thank you.
So you, as you can see from the list tonight, Spire is going to be in town doing a lot of different movements throughout the community. So if someone asks you who's out working on the rideaway, it more than likely is them because it seems to do, that they're doing some major upgrades and, and going from two-inch to four-inch mains in a lot of areas. The Muddy Creek Regional Retention, the final plan and set up marks for the engineering firm this past week. We've received a preliminary jurisdictional determination request sent to the court, and they have determined that an individual, individual permit will be required in lieu of the national, nationwide permit. Individual permit will require a public hearing and possible mitigation. So that essentially means they have slowed us up in their determination, but we're going to continue to move forward with that, to get that accomplished, and also working with the water district that's involved with that as well, and, and trying to get those things remedied. The City Lake and Lake Luna project was given notice to proceed. You've probably seen some of the communications that went out about the park being closed up to the dog park. We're making some provisions for the paintball area for some of the weekends. That staff's working in conjunction with them and the contractor to make sure that they don't lose those scheduled events. And we're already getting the topsoil, so that's, that's all moving. And, you know, our hope is that the weather will cooperate and we can keep moving forward with that project to get it done as quick as possible. And I think by the end, it'll be a much nicer amenity and opportunity. The South Service Area Sanctuary, one of the things that we've been doing on as a part of a design build to move the, the project forward. I think Carl's got most of the letters and discussions with a lot of the property owners that are through there for the, some of the temporary easements, some of the permanent easements. He's already got, do you still have one that's signed already?
Just one that's in agreement.
And one in agreement. He's only got twenty-six more to go. And the, additionally, the consultant that was involved, we, we have not been happy with some of the engineering decisions, and I have given Carl the authority to tell them that we're done. And as a result of that, Carl and Ted think they can do a lot of the work that Labor Preliminary doing and do it with some of our subcontractors to get it done at a, a good pace, but also a better rate as well. We've got capable staff that can do a, a lot of these different projects, and I think I have confidence in them to move in forward with that, to get that project completed on time. Anything that gets under my skin really bad is when we pay engineering companies and they know what our budget is, and then they come in with something that is a lot more expensive than what we told them they had to do. And when they do that, I'm done, and they can go on down the road. So, you know, we pay for professional services. If they're not going to be professional, then we need to, to go another method. The outdoor pool project, as you've seen some of the pictures that went out today, they are pouring concrete. So maybe question about the cold. The contractors know how to deal with concrete in the cold and how to cover concrete. So I'm sure that'll be some discussions that people will bring up, but they are well capable, and we are going to make sure that pool is open. And that's why we're continuing to move forward on that project as well. The Marla Allen Park, you've seen the, the initial base poured and additional riser that's been poured. That is being done mostly by our staff. We have some awesome in, in-house volunteers that are also participating in that. But as you recall, we have a staff member that's built a few of these, and it's leading that part of that project. And so we're, we're happy to see it moving forward. Culvers has gotten a, a conditional occupational temporary TCO to be able to start training their staff. They will be having their VIP on the eleventh, it's just Saturday, and then they're going to open to the public on the thirteenth, or that's their plan too, which would be the thirteenth, Monday. So we're excited to see them open. Starbucks, as you see, is continuing to frame up and moving forward. And then Scooters has turned in their, their permit and staff's in the second phase of the plan review with them as well. Gould Evans is continuing to move forward with the meetings that we had. We had a meeting this morning with the Chamber Economic Development Group, as well as the Love the Square group. We get input and information from them. Positive meeting. Dennis was there too, and we had a lot of good information. We are, are continuing forward with additional meetings with, met with MODOT, even kind of conversed with MODOT. Some of the things that we would like to see MODOT put on their radar, which is the widening of, of two highway through town with a turn lane. And they have relayed to us that the preliminary review from I forty-nine to the railroad tracks of Mechanic, that they should be getting something to us in January to kind of look at what their, their possible suggestions would be for that area as well. They have, of course, have not assigned that they're going to pay for anything yet, but they are at least doing the plan review, and they actually did it in-house and not just farming that out to consultants. The I forty-nine to the railroad tracks there on Mechanic, yeah, looking at that whole mess that they need to fix. And then Gould Evans is also, we were meeting with county commissioners, got input from two of them that attended the meeting as well. We also had some dialogue about county facilities and some things that they might be doing. As you all know, you've, you've seen some of the news about different things that Cass County is doing. They bought up a place up north, and they're moving a sheriff annex office up to the north part of the county. They're also putting a health department up there, or plan to put a annex health department there, but their first initial is to put a sheriff office annex. And from the last I heard, about fifteen, the sheriff asked for twenty-five deputies. They were planning to fund fifteen deputies for that. They are doing a covering of all of their new equipment down at their public works facility. They put up, parked their equipment under shelter. And they're also redoing a couple of pods in the jail, and they're going to house federal inmates in the jail, and it will generate for them about one point six million. That will help fund some of the operational needs of the annex building that they build up to the north as well. And so that's a big change, definitely for us even, that we'll be reviewing on their operations. And the mayor and I are involved with the, the crime commission. It's being discussed for all of Cass County, and there seems to be a focus to make sure that we nip a lot of any, any type of crime coming up throughout the county. And with that, Madam Mayor, I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
I think Sandy raised her hand.
Alderman. Questions from the media? Nothing, Dennis? Okay. All right. Well, I have some comments I want to make. I don't have anything planned for December twentieth, and so with the board's permission, I would say we will not have a, a Board of Aldermen meeting on December twentieth, Christmas week. How does that sound? Wow. Does that sound good to you all? I'm going to give you, give you a week off. All right. So no December twentieth meeting. January third, I want to move that to Tuesday because January third is New Year's weekend, and I want you all to be in good shape when you come. So, so I'd like to just notify you that I'd like to move the January third meeting to January fourth. Brad has already talked about the comprehensive plan meeting. January sixth is the next public meeting. It'll be at the Chamber at six P.M. I really would hope that some of you would be able to plug that into your calendar. And then January eighth, I realize it's still a ways away, but please save the date for the town hall meeting. We have Lifelight Eagle coming to do a presentation on, they call it Stop the Bleed, which is a very important program that there's a encouragement from all healthcare facilities that each of us would know how to stop the bleed. You never know when someone, maybe in your family, falls or gets hurt, or work, or wherever. They really want everybody to know how to be able to stop bleeding. So I'm very pleased to have someone of that quality presenting that program for us. They're going to come back probably in February sometime and also do a CPR class. Alderman Dorhoff has asked that we do that as well. So those are a couple of things that are in the works for us with Lifelight Eagle.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to start streaming those meetings?
We're working on that.
Okay.
Thank you for reminding me. The church is trying to work out arrangements where they can livestream our town hall meetings now, but Lifelight Eagle has said that if the church is not able to do that at the January meeting, they will.
Super.
So we know that January eighth meeting will be livestreamed. Yeah, thank you for reminding me. And the other thing I want to talk about is just Christmas on the Square. You know, the, the mayor's tree lighting was just so exciting this year because the street was full of people. You know, from Lexington to Independence, that block in front of the south side of the courthouse was full of people from curb to curb. And I had seven wonderful little children helping me light the tree. And one of those was a wee little one, a young lady who has some attachments to someone in the room. And while she was up there, when the count got down to, we counted down from ten, when the count got down to two and one and flipped the lights, she said, mommy, it's Christmas. And that's just, that's what it's about, you know? Christmas is about kids. And so I want to thank everyone. I want to thank the department heads. Grant, I want to thank you and your staff for being there to get the tree lit, and everybody who worked hard. Alderman Mills, Alderman Franklin, Love the Square. I agree, Amanda Stites and her group did an outstanding job. It was an absolute delight. The, the square was just fantastic that night. With that, I have no more comments. Does anybody else have anything else you want to say before we adjourn? Then I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
The motion is from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Milner. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. We're adjourned. We'll take a five-minute break and then come back.